Good afternoon, everyone. Those who are here with us and those who are joining us via RAGA Muntzrat and through social media, members of the committee, I welcome you all back and our witnesses. I am going to proceed for our witnesses this afternoon just to iterate some housekeeping rules. These proceedings are recorded and forms part of the transcripts and records of the report. Are being broadcasted on RAGA Muntzrat and through social media platforms. We ask that you speak clearly. The committee will ask questions and invite witnesses to clarify questions if necessary. And witnesses, you too may clarify any question that may deem clarification. And witnesses, you may advance suggestions and solutions and recommendations. The committee is not here to answer questions. However, if there is a question you wish to ask, we will recall this and seek an answer which advances the work and purpose of the committee. Witnesses and the organization may be asked to provide documentation or further information to assist the work of the committee. Witnesses may refer to their legal attorney for advice or their institutions on answering questions. We reserve the right to recall witnesses and request further information in its various forms. This afternoon, we have with us our first witness is Mr. Joseph Ogaro. And Mr. Ogaro, for the record, can you please state your name so that we know that I am not misrepresenting you?
Good afternoon. Oops, sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Ogaro. My substantive role is as port manager with a subsidiary appointment as harbor master.
Okay. Can you briefly describe for us the distinction between both roles? Give us an idea of what is involved in each?
Well, quite simply, the as port manager, that role is more in line with the commercial operations of the port, whereas the harbor master role is more in line with the maritime responsibilities.
Okay. Are you governed by any particular laws in relation to either role?
Yes. The Port Authority Act of 1977 appoints the port manager. And in the said legislation, it also appoints the port manager as the harbor master.
Are you affiliated with any local or international organization in relation to your role in either roles?
Well, there are a number of MOUs that we've got signed with a number of other entities in what we call the Red and white group, which is primarily the British Flag Register in conjunction with the Crown dependencies and overseas territories. So such, we've got signed MOUs with the United Kingdom Maritime Coast Guard Agency with the UK Hydrographic Office and the UK Maritime, I'm sorry, the Department for Transport, sorry, which is the overarching body.
Have any relations with regional bodies or particular states?
Not at this time, no.
Antigua?
No. But I will revert to that a little later in our discussions this afternoon in terms of regional bodies which we interact with but are not formally a part of. And I will limit my discussions to maritime issues as compared to commercial issues. The Port Authority, of course, is a member of the Port Management Association of the Caribbean, but that is largely on the commercial side of things, shipping of containers back and forth and not really involved in the regulatory side of things.
Okay. And the regulatory side of things, what laws or regulations?
Well, the Port Authority Act of 1977 does have some maritime-related responsibilities there, but as the date would suggest, it's quite some time ago. In recent times, there would have been the Merchant Shipping Act of 2013 as amended. And what we have in the pipeline now is even an overhaul of that maritime legislation of 2013. As we speak, the Attorney General's Chambers is in the process of reviewing no less than seven bills and possibly about 12 regulations which would update the Merchant Shipping Act and bring it current, you know, make it relevant to today's circumstances.
In relation, as you know, we are looking at access matters and in particular, our ferry service. In relation to requirements for vessels to sail, can you explain to the committee what these requirements entail and the relevant regulations governing?
So the regulations are international regulations. And I'm happy that I'm here this afternoon to correct the public record or the information that is circulating. These requirements, they're not Montreal requirements, they're not Antigua requirements. They're international requirements as set down by the IMO. The IMO is a UN body with no less than 175 members. And these regulations that we speak about, the safety regulations, are promulgated from the United Nations. As such, there is no real space for referring to them as a bunch of regulations or British regulations or any other such regulation, the international regulations in the truest sense of the word and would have been signed on, like I said, by no less than 175 member states.
And the acronym IMO stands for?
International Maritime Organization, a UN body.
Can you tell this committee, and we want as specific as we can get, what are the regulations governing passenger ferry in Muntzrat's service?
So again, I would prefer to use general terms because necessarily, you could have a passenger ferry, you could have a rope packs ferry.
Yes, sorry. I'm telling you to continue.
That carries both passenger and cargo, for argument's sake. What's relevant here are the SOLAS requirements. So SOLAS, the convention was extended to Muntzrat quite some time ago. And as such, the requirements that we must meet are those that are specified and required under SOLAS. In terms of, you know, breaking it down into specific requirements, these are published on the Port Authority website. And they list not only the requirements but other due diligence information that we require. It's a two-page document. And like I'm saying, it's in the public domain. And I would have heard the access coordinator say earlier this morning that these regulations are not new. Certainly, SOLAS is not new. What I would like to quickly do is correct some of the information that was provided this morning where the access coordinator made reference to the SCV code and implied or directly said that the SCV code is not as rigorous as SOLAS. That's wholly inaccurate. The SOLAS convention, sorry. Right. So SOLAS is the Safety of Life at Sea. Right. The SCV code is a small commercial vessel code. Typically, IMO conventions refer to vessels of what we call convention size. Convention size is more than 24 meters. So SOLAS requirements, strictly speaking, right, apply to vessels of greater than 24 meters. However, there are vessels, of course, that are smaller than that. And the principles of SOLAS, right, apply to those vessels under the Small Commercial Vessel Code. They are no less stringent. It's just that they apply to a different class of vessel. So to suggest that one code is less stringent than the other is wholly inaccurate.
You said, you explained what SOLAS means.
Yes.
What does CV code, the CV code?
Stands for Small Commercial Vessel Code. SCV code, Small Commercial Vessel Code. I could expand on that and just, you know, speak to the origins of the Small Commercial Vessel Code. Jeez, sorry. The code applies to vessels operating commercially, trading in the Caribbean area, which are five meters more in length and less than 24 meters in length. Typically operate at a distance 20 miles or less from the nearest harbor or safe refuge, carry no more than 150 passengers where overnight accommodation is provided. They carry no more than 50 passengers on overnight voyages. And those are the typical, well, conditions for a small commercial vessel.
Operating no more than 20 miles outside Muntzrat?
From nearest harbor or safe refuge. The entire sentence is important.
Please explain.
So if you're undertaking a voyage, for argument's sake, that's more than 20 meters, then another safety code would be required to regulate that journey.
But if you're traveling between Muntzrat and Antigua, by the time you reach 20 miles out, you're closer to Antigua than, how does that go?
Right. So here's where we get into another distinction. And I refer again to the presentation that was made by the access coordinator earlier this morning. There's a distinction between international voyages and domestic voyages. So SOLAS applies to vessels on international voyages.
Any vessel?
On convention-sized vessel on international voyages.
Any vessel over 24?
24 meters, 24 meters, yes. So the Caribbean variant, if you want to refer to it as that, for smaller vessels, is a Small Commercial Vessel Code. It's been applicable since 2001 and it applies to vessels 24 meters or less. And of course, the other caveats that I've just listed, not exclusively, but there are a number of additional caveats that are listed, but those are the primary ones that are of concern to us.
Can you tell us, in SOLAS? Please tell us what falls within the SOLAS requirements. What would one look for from a vessel that you wish to certify and requires the SOLAS?
Well, let me just speak a bit about SOLAS itself. So International Convention for the Safety of Life at Sea, like I said before, is an international maritime treaty that sets out the minimum safety standards in construction, equipment, and operation of merchant ships. The International Maritime Organization Convention requires signatory flag states to ensure that ships flagged by them comply with these standards. So generally, you can see the things that SOLAS are going to be looking at. They're looking at the standard to which the vessel is built, the equipment that's carried on the vessel, and the operation of the vessel. Not wanting to devolve into details, let me just say generally that there are 14 chapters involved in SOLAS. And the chapter most pertinent for us would be chapter five, where we look at, you know, safety apparatus and such like. Some of the chapters refer to security, which even though is important, you could see is less critical. It looks at, you know, terrorist acts, you know, ensuring that the vessel is operated in a manner that you could detect, deter, report terrorist acts such that you could, you know, preserve life and property.
So explain to us our typical ferries that we normally get because that's what we are looking at, access and what ferries. What is the process that one would undertake for certification for a ferry to be allowed to operate here?
That's a term again that I'm happy this afternoon to ensure that we use correctly.
Correctly, yes.
Because the harbor master is not really engaged in certifying any vessel for operation. We are engaged in approving a vessel for operation. The term certify in maritime industry has got a very specific connotation. I need to back up a little bit and just give some,
Yes, give us the.
A little bit more context on the concept of a flag state, a port state, and a coastal state. Coastal state is not somewhat applicable for our discussions this afternoon, but certainly, flag state and port state concepts are important. Now, as every individual has got a nationality, in the same manner, a vessel must have a nationality. And that jurisdiction is responsible for that vessel. And for all intents and purposes, it operates, you know, as a part of that jurisdiction. They are responsible for certifying that the vessel is operating in accordance with the various international standards that are out there. SOLAS, for example. Something else that we did not speak about, MARPA, which is, again, just quickly using layman terms, is maritime pollution, you know, preventing maritime pollution. The whole list of IMO conventions, but like I said previously, our focus this afternoon, the relevant focus would be on SOLAS. However, to return to the main thrust of the discussion, the flag state is the one who is responsible for certifying the vessel and ensuring that the vessel is adhering to all of these international standards. To demonstrate that the vessel is in fact complying, the flag state would issue the relevant certificates saying that the vessel has got A, B, and C, whatever, valid from this date to that date. And that is a process of certifying the vessel. So Muntzrat has got no role at this point in certifying a vessel. So we approve a vessel for operation. And in real terms, that is just a part of due diligence, you know, ensuring that the vessel that comes to Muntzrat is fit for a purpose. The, sorry.
Just a quick question. Who do you communicate with or do you have a role in the whole process of procurement and obtaining a ferry in indicating whether a vessel is certified or not? Are you the one who finds out whether it's certified or not and then reports to the office, the premier's office, the access coordinator? How does that go?
Right. So, and I hope I get some latitude here just to discuss the matter.
Please, please, please.
I'm going to back up and, you know, give some historical information that Honorable Romeo, you would be very familiar with. The maritime administration is a primary stakeholder from a safety perspective. The maritime administration delegates its operational duties and responsibilities to the harbor master, which is why I'm before this body this afternoon. Speaking to the government of Muntzrat procurement process and speaking quite frankly, as it relates to the procurement of ferry services, at this point, I would say categorically that it is not joined up, that the relevant stakeholders are not engaged in a fuller fashion as they should. But I need to add a caveat to that because necessarily, you start at a given point and you make progress. And as we speak, I think that process is in its early maturity stage that we could say that we are comfortable with the interactions. We would have been less than happy with the early engagements, starting back in 2013 to even earlier this year, where we would have found out about invitations to tender after they would have gone out. Now, of course, the regulations and the requirements for safety that we speak about are international. So by all means, those could be included in ITT. You know, it doesn't take a technician from the maritime administration to do that. They're generally available. However, the evaluation, you know, is important. And the subsequent engagement with the operator is also important. And this is a piece that I want to, you know, highlight more than anything else because here is where we have been making strides and closing the gaps that would have existed before. So to get back to your question, currently, we are involved and we are happy with the level of engagement that we are receiving from our procurement and the access division. But the relationship has not been without these challenges in the past.
I believe my question is what role you play in that process of confirming certification of a vessel? Do you play a role in that?
So making reference to my early comment, we don't confirm certification. Once a vessel has provided the certificates, we need to accept them at face value. So what we do, or would be review them, would be to review them and engage with the operator and subsequently approve the operator for a service.
So to be direct, the access coordinator this morning said they were waiting on you to indicate the certification of a vessel.
Right. A more accurate comment from him would have been that he would have been unaware of my response, not that I did not respond. And I would have hoped that his P S, who was sat next to him and copied on the emails, would have corrected the public record at that point.
You're saying you did respond. You did not respond to him.
Correct.
Responded to the P S.
Correct.
So he should, if he, oh dear Lord. He should have been notified or?
Well, that's an internal matter for access.
Okay, okay.
I can't tell you what should or should not have been done.
Okay, good, good.
I'm just simply saying that this morning, there are a number of assertions that the port manager did not respond. And to each and every one of those, I categorically say that the emails are here to prove and they're available for your review if necessary.
Again, once the chair, Honorable Dossit agrees, we would like to see those communications. And going back to before November last year, any procurement discussion over the ferry, please, we'd like to see them.
Certainly.
Okay.
In this manner. No, I was asking if there's anything else you want to add for approval. You spoke about Antigua. What's the connection between ourselves and Antigua with respect to approval of a vessel?
Okay. So earlier, I spoke to a flag state, well, flag state concept, where the vessel, the flag state is responsible for ensuring that the vessel is constructed and maintained as per the international standards. The lifeblood it is, the IMO in its, well, provided for separate verification of those certificates. This process is called a port state control inspection. So any vessel that arrives at any port, any place in the world where that jurisdiction is a signatory to the IMO convention, they've got the right to board the vessel, request that all the relevant certificates be provided, inspect the equipment, and ensure that everything is as is said on the certificates that is referred to as port state control. What the Muntzrat Maritime Administration, and by extension, the harbor master, was involved in was not even port state control. This was just due diligence pre-contract signing. So I'm hoping that I can use specific examples. And in particular, look at the Jaden Sun. I'll look at the recent incident first and I'll back up and provide some historical context to 20, when is it, 2016? I think it was, yeah, 2016 when the Jaden Sun first started to operate between Muntzrat and Antigua. Right. So at some point during the process, the maritime administration was engaged and we were asked to look at the submissions by the Jaden Sun. At that point, we identified that a number of certificates were not provided. We then engaged directly with the management of the Jaden Sun. And over the course of a week, a number of things unfolded. Our first response from the Jaden Sun was the certificates are not required. We did not respond to that query in particular. Simply wrote back saying, these are the certificates that we require. Please provide them. We received some further certificates, but were then advised that the additional certificates that we require are not available because the surveyor, who would be responsible for surveying the vessel and certifying it and producing the certificates, was unavailable or would not be available for another five days to a week. After having received that correspondence one evening, the following day, as in less than 24 hours later, after having identified to us that the inspector, the surveyor, was not going to be available, the outstanding certificates were provided. At that point, I wrote and said to the access division that we have to, we have to accept the certificates on their face because that is the process. We cannot dispute the fact that the vessel was certified and we indicated as such. What we then went on to say is that we recommend as a part of a due diligence process, the approval process, for want of a better word, that the vessel be inspected by a surveyor contracted by Muntzrat, right, to confirm that the veracity of the certificate. I'm not sure. That answers the question or should I continue?
I'm interested in the outcome. Continue.
Fine. So this is where it gets interesting because we reached out to, we made arrangements to have the vessel inspected and we advised the Jaden Sun accordingly that the vessel was going to be undergoing a pre-contract inspection at the cost, well, the cost was going to be borne by the government of Muntzrat and please indicate when and where the vessel was going to be available. At that point, the Jaden Sun wrote back, right, and said that they were withdrawing from the process, which is quite critical. I would like everybody to be aware of this because the general school of thought is that the Jaden Sun was denied certification. They were not approved. However, the written record would indicate definitively that the Jaden Sun withdrew from the port. However, the written record would indicate definitively that the Jaden Sun withdrew from the process. The next day virtually. Certainly. No, I want to go back and add some more.
Just for clarity, Mr. Ogaro, so you were headed to approve, they hadn't been approved yet or had they been approved and notified of the intention to conduct the inspection?
They were notified that we've received all the certificates that we require and that they are required to undergo a pre-contract inspection prior to further engagement.
Prior to approval?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the stand, well, obviously you have the authority to do so if you wish to engage a vessel, to undertake a pre-approval inspection.
Yes, but thi- this is not something that's specific to maritime or anything like that. This is, is a contractual matter. This is, this is due diligence that you're undertaking prior to signing the contract. So whereas there is a maritime aspect to it, is not strictly speaking a maritime issue. You presented some certificates and the contracting authority is undertaking a process to confirm that what you've said in these certificates or, I mean, for when you're hiring somebody, you ask for references and such like, and you go out to confirm that the certificates that you in fact have received are true and valid and, you know, they in fact demonstrate the situation on the ground. And that, that is all that process is, is a due diligence process that leads to the approval of the vessel to operate.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I understand that. I was just trying to clarify if this is the standard approach adopted when it comes to?
This, this is the standard approach adopted worldwide.
And by the Moncat Maritime Administration.
Correct. And we need to ensure that is now a formal part of the procurement process as it relates to ferry service. I can't speak to how government does the rest of their business, but in terms of making my job easier, certainly it would help tremendously if this was an integral part of the procurement process.
Okay. Thank you for your response. So at least now it's on the record that this is a usual process that is undertaken in ensuring that, of course, you get best service for your money. Now, I just want to go back to the, briefly, to approval versus certification. So I'm looking at your website. I understand that you've indicated we're not a flag state.
Port state control.
Sorry?
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have preempted your question.
Right. So we're not a flag state. We don't provide certification, we provide approval. So looking at your website, I just want to be clear that I'm following you correctly. So I know there's a page that talks about prior to commencement of passenger vessel operation, certain information has to be provided where the vessel is registered under the code, small vessels, small commercial vessels code.
Or it could be any code. You're just making reference to that, but I need to make a correction. We are a flag state. We are a category two flag state. But in reference to the Jaden Sun, we're not the Jaden Sun's flag state. So we've got no responsibility, no requirement to certify the Jaden Sun. That's totally outside our remit. There is some authority as it relates to port state control activities when the vessel does arrive here and what we can do on the vessel when it is here alongside the jetty in Moncat.
Okay, because I recall you indicating that Moncat has the role currently in certifying a vessel. Is that because we don't have any vessels that operate with Moncat as a flag state? No vessels that are Moncat vessels per se?
So we maintain a ship registry and at this point, the only vessels that we have on it are pleasure craft. And the, with regards the current dependencies and overseas territories, there are two classes of registries. They're all flag states unified under the British flag. But they are category two registries, of which Moncat is one. And as such, we only register vessels less than 24 meters.
That's a small, those that fall under small commercial vessels code?
Correct.
And you referenced your web, your website. So these are?
International, international.
Right. So these are the certifications that are required to be provided to satisfy Moncat that a ship can be, a vessel, sorry, can be approved.
I guess.
Just for, I'm sorry. The reason I'm asking is because, and then you referred us to your website, but just for record purposes, I wanted to list them and you confirmed for me. It's about from A to M that these are the certifications. I notice it's not limited to, include but not limited to.
So the, so this is a PDF document that can be downloaded from the port website. And items one to four are really due diligence issues, information that we're trying to gather to ensure that we could correctly assess the safety of the vessel. The certification requirements really start at number five.
Sorry. Certification requirements in the manner that you have these certificates and not Moncat certified, just for clarity.
Correct. Correct. And this information that we have listed here is not Moncat requirements, like I'm saying. We would have looked at the international requirements and just condensed them onto a maritime administration letterhead and published for easy reference. So I want to point you to five A while we're there. It speaks to SOLAS Passenger Ship Safety Certificate with appropriate operational limitations. You would have seen some mention of the limitations, I think someplace between one and four on the previous page. But the caveat there is that this can be based on the Caribbean Small Commercial Vessel Code for vessels less than 24 meters. And that's the distinction. We spoke previously about vessels over 24 meters to which strictly the IMO SOLAS Convention applies as a convention sized vessel as compared to vessels less than 24 meters, to which we will apply the Caribbean Small Commercial Vessel Code. All the pillars that are in SOLAS, you'd find reflected in the Small Commercial Vessel Code. There is no watering down of the requirements. It's simply applying the requirements to a vessel of a smaller size. So the, I want to just go on and speak a little bit more about the Jaden Sun because it's such an emotive issue. You'd want me to read?
Do you wish to read them?
Not particularly.
I mean, I can read them if you.
They're a matter of international.
Yeah, but we just want them all recorded.
Fine.
And because it's being broadcasted.
Oh, well, let me, let me assist.
Okay.
So the, this could be found on the Port Authority website. I'm not sure what the, the link is there, but I think it's on the safety and security, on the, on the link on the page. Yeah, let me. On the safety and security. So you'd find this document which is headed up Passenger Vessel Certification Requirements. Says prior to the commencement of passenger vessel operations, the provision of certain information is essential, together of course with the mandatory safety and security checks with the Moncat Marine Police, namely where the vessel is registered and under what code, the operational limitations, including weather and sea states, the maritime, I'm sorry, the management company if applicable, the last survey or inspection report, including but not limit, limited to the gross tonnage of the vessel, the length of the vessel, the size of the engine, the type of the engine, the speed of the vessel, when the vessel was last in dry dock, the date of the next dry dock, any outstanding maintenance issues, the class surveyor, the previous owner, safety manning with minimum crew and crew certification, number of fuel tanks, total capacity of fuel tanks, how many ballast and associated arrangements, jet stream or propeller, what type, freshwater capacity, number of bathrooms, number and type of lifesaving appliances onboard as per code requirements, type of firefighting systems. Point five, relevant in-date survey certificates as per the code requirements. Vessel certifications required will include but not be limited to SOLAS Passenger Safety Certificate with appropriate operational limitations. It may be a high-speed craft safety certificate if appropriate. This can be based on the Caribbean Small Commercial Vessel Code for vessels less than 24 meters if appropriately notified to the IMO. International Load Line Certificate, International Tonnage Certificate, International Sewage Pollution Prevention Certificate, International Anti-Fouling Certificate or Statement. Evidence of Maritime Labour Convention compliance as per flag state requirement, which is also included in the Caribbean Small Commercial Vessel Certification. Evidence of compliance or non-applicability of International Ballast Water Management Convention. Evidence of passenger carriage liability insurance, minimum safe manning document as per flag state requirements, engine international air pollution prevention certificate, international safety management certificate, international ship security certificate, dangerous goods certificate as required. The above information is to be submitted to Mr. Joseph Ogaro at joseph.Ogaro@mpa.ms and copied to maritime-administration@gov.ms. This is dated 17 October 2022, Joseph Ogaro on behalf of the Moncat Maritime Administration.
And this has been the requirement prior to the date you just mentioned always?
Correct.
So maybe I should just ask, the very same Jaden Sun that has been traveling all waters for several years, would it have met those certifications while doing those trips for us?
Very good question. Not a happy answer. So.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
It's a very good question and not a very happy answer.
Okay. Okay.
I would have spoken earlier about my dissatisfaction with the procurement process and it not being joined up and stakeholders not being adequately consulted, for want of a better word. So here's really Jaden Sun. The Jaden Sun, I can't recall the details of the ITT and who was involved, but I can just say this, the Jaden Sun began service in November of 2016. And on, on the 7th of December, Mr. Thomas Robinson of the Antigua and Barbuda Maritime Department inspected the Jaden Sun and found no less than eight safety deficiencies. So I was told that I'm not supposed to ask questions, but let me just pose this. I mean, if the, the things that I raised before about due diligence, right, and what we're trying to do, if due diligence was done and if we were consulted, right, then certainly it would not have been down to the Antigua government to identify to us that we've got a ferry running between Moncat and Antigua that has got no less than eight safety deficiencies.
And what, what was the question you want to ask?
Why was this allowed to happen?
Well, I was just going to let you know we're not allowed to ask questions, but I'll ask you back the question. Can you tell us why this was allowed?
Well, this is something I'd have to refer back to the premier's office. And the, I'm certain you'd be where it would be, would have been premier then.
Sure, absolutely.
For access and certain procurement and necessarily, you know, how, why the consultation process was, why we engaged with a vessel, signed a contract that at the end of the day, the operator was, was found not to be in, in compliance with a number of safety requirements. It is a two-page document with a third page with, with a key. And I would hope that the honorable panel member would not want me to read this into the public record. But it's certainly available for, for inspection, but. Sorry?
We will wish to have the document.
Why do you say it should be ready? We wouldn't want it to be ready.
Maybe I didn't want the task.
Okay, I wouldn't want the public to.
Are there key aspects of it which you wish to highlight?
The, so, so the, let me speak a little bit for us about the mechanism by which this information is collected and shared. The, the world generally is broken up into nine, maybe properly 10, what we call port state control areas. The, each governed by a memorandum of understanding for the particular region. So Moncat falls into the Caribbean MOU because we're in that particular area. However, we are not members or signatories to the CMOU based on size. For proper participation, it requires a set number of unique vessel visits to, to the jurisdiction. Moncat does not meet the threshold. We've probably got about four unique vessels that call here over and over again. So as such, we're not really, I'm sorry, let me speak definitively. We are not a part of the CMOU. We've approached CMOU, of course, you know, hoping to arrange an associate membership so that we could benefit from the information that's shared there. Antigua, on the other hand, is a very active member of the CMOU. The, necessarily, once you're a signatory to that MOU, you are required to inspect, survey a certain percentage of vessels that arrive in your port to ensure that they are complying with the international safety standards. So Jaden Sun, having been brought into service on the route between Moncat and Antigua in November, was subject to a port state control in Antigua on the 12th of December. And the inspection was done, like I said, by Mr. Thomas Robinson. The report here that is available through the CMOU portal lists the deficiencies. The first one, load line freeboard not marked. It's got 14 days to re, to correct that. Lifebuoys, lifelines require renewal, lifebuoys to be marked with retro reflective tape, automatic identification system showing incorrect details, route manual not complete. And this is the most egregious, safety management certificate not on board. No passenger vessel should ever put to sea or should be allowed to put to sea without safety management certificate. It's not even on board.
What does that involve?
The safety management certificate speaks to the safety management systems that are in place on, on the vessel, basically for protection of, you know, the, the life of the passengers. The international ship security certificate not on board. Copy of document of compliance ISM not on board. Fire lockers on deck not marked. Right. So those are the eight deficiencies that have been listed here. And Jaden Sun at that point was given 14 days to, to rectify those issues.
So were they rectified?
They were. And there was a follow-up inspection that was conducted by Christopher Balls on the 31st of January 2017. At that point, the load line marks were still not rectified, but the other deficiencies were largely corrected, which demonstrates that not only Jaden Sun is aware that the certificates are required and once deficiencies are identified, they're also aware that they have to correct them.
Correct, correct.
They did that in 2016, 2017. So let's fast forward now. Necessarily, in the administration, we are familiar with all of this information. Let's fast forward now to early this year when we're writing to the Jaden Sun requiring these certificates and they're telling us categorically that they're not required. Further, later on, they provide some of the certificates saying, okay, the outstanding certificates we'll provide later, but we're unable to do so in the short term because the surveyor is not available. Twenty-four hours later, we've got all the certificates. So the, is that for me to interpret what the implication is? What I can say in my professional capacity is that at the end of the day, we requested this certificate and after engaging with the owners over a period of time, we received all of the certificates. Our guidance to the access division was fine. We must accept the certificates on their face value. However, we require in the best interest, in the national interest, that a pre-contract inspection be undertaken.
Thank you very much.
Just to ensure that the information that is provided is accurate. And at that point, Honorable Romeo, the Jadon Sun wrote and withdrew from the process.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's the forthrightness I want to see before this committee. And it seems that you have evidence to back what you're saying, so please provide whatever you have and those who come after will be able to follow.
Not quite done with the Jadon Sun.
Oh, go right ahead.
So in engaging with the Jadon Sun, we would have relied, I spoke of two port state control inspections. One was in twenty sixteen and one was in twenty seventeen. The twenty seventeen would have, inspection would have identified that largely all the deficiencies were corrected. There's inspection that was done in twenty nineteen that lists a number of deficiencies that were observed at that time. There's some nine deficiencies in twenty nineteen and certificates that would have been expired. When we started to engage with the Jadon Sun, it was primarily based on this document to confirm that the deficiencies that were identified by Adams in twenty nineteen were corrected before the government of Munshat engaged in a new contract. So this is the basis under which we were very particular in saying we need to ensure that the Jadon Sun, they provided these certificates. We have to accept them on their face value. We need to confirm what is going on. Part of due diligence. Now-
What's those that were listed in twenty nineteen?
I guess I'll have to read them again. High-speed craft, safety and permit to operate certificate not endorsed for periodical survey as required. Copy of document of compliance certificate expired. Certificate, load lines certificate not endorsed for periodical survey as required. International Ship Security Certificate not endorsed for periodical survey as required. Stability information, no stability information cited on board. Medical certificate, no valid medical certificates found on board. Type and qualification, MLC, personal safety training. Type rating certificate for master and officers not available on board as required. Other certificates, route operating manual not complete or available on board as required. Anchoring devices, anchor shackle thickness is in visible portions and not at the required levels and deteriorated. Master instructed to carry out required maintenance and repairs as identified. Then it goes on to list some certificates, this is twenty nineteen, and the document of compliance was expired since twenty seventeen. That would be the only relevant certificate that I need to mention here, having been expired. So this is the background from which we engage with the Jadon Sun. The, I want to digress again, just in terms of, you know, the national interest and what I perceive to be my responsibility. Having presented certificates that we have to accept on face value, the government of Munshat could have engaged in a contract with the Jadon Sun. The vessel could have arrived here and start carrying passengers across to Antigua. But the minute it got to Antigua, Adams would be on that vessel to check it, to verify, because it's a part of the natural, normal international process. At that point, the Jadon Sun could have been found to be non-compliant in so serious a manner that is detained. So you've contracted with a vessel that cannot offer the service. Or it would have resulted, or it could have resulted in deficiencies that maybe they have fourteen days to rectify and they did so. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. I can't speak to that. I can't speculate. So it was prudent that we simply advise that the government of Munshat undertake proper due diligence, do a pre-contract inspection or survey, which is standard in the industry, and engage thereafter. So that would be the sum total of our engagement with the Jadon Sun. Our involvement ceased when they withdrew from the process.
So this is why you're maintaining that you should be fully involved in the process, integrally involved in the process of procurement?
The, I think that any prudent person would conclude that.
Yes, I just want to reinforce it because that's what point you made before.
Yes.
And thank you very much for evidence to support what you say. We appreciate it. Anything else further, Mr. Jadon?
Well, I'm here to take questions. I've just addressed the Jadon Sun in particular.
Okay.
But I think that would have highlighted in general the issues that we face and it would have put to rest some of the misconceptions that's been circulating
Thank you.
in the public domain.
Mr. O'Garrow, since we're dealing with the vessels and approval, I want to use the correct terminology. We would have heard evidence and we are aware in Munshat that there was also plans from the Salem Development Committee, the Salem Grouping, to bring a vessel in. Can you tell us about the approval of that vessel and the challenges?
The, in a nutshell, there are no challenges because the vessel never presented any certificates. There was nothing for us to deliberate upon. The, we would have made multiple requests to who we considered to be the responsible parties because we heard of this not through a formal mechanism. We heard the the offer being advertised, social media, and we were proactive, we reached out. We tried to get the information from the owners, operators, and they did not provide the necessary information.
This was in writing, in any form?
The, this is where the discussion, I think, becomes very emotive because the, after having not received a response from the operators, there was a letter that would have been sent to the operators from the governor's office, which simply directed that these are the requirements for vessel operations and those certificates need to be directed to myself and copied to the general email address. The, I think the matter grew legs at that point and, you know, we got a lot of feedback in the public domain. But prior to that, you know, all our efforts to engage with the owners and the operators came to naught.
Could you tell us what the name of that operator?
I can't recall, but I could certainly, you know, refer to my emails and get back to you. But I think the owner is in, is in Antigua and I would have spoken to a number of prominent members of the Salem Action Group, I think the name is. I would have spoken to at least two of those members. In fact, I was on a conference call with one of the more prominent members, the owner and myself, a three-way conference call where I outlined that, you know, the certificates were required.
Are you presently actively play involved as you would recommend or have recommended so far in the processes, the procurement process going on at the moment over the vessels that are being consulted?
Yes, there's a step change in terms of where we were prior to this year. However, like I'm saying, I'm still not happy that we are as mature as we could be in that process. However, we are sufficiently advanced such that the issues that we'd have encountered before with certificates not being presented, the unwillingness to engage in the pre-contract survey, we have, we have gone beyond that. But what I wanted more draw to attention is maybe just fine-tuning the procurement process to ensure that these steps are now built into the procurement process for the ferry itself, that a pre-contract survey is necessary and, you know, all those timeframes are built in. The, yeah, I think that would, would-
Just to take us back, why would the letter emanate from- why would the letter emanate from the governor's office as opposed to, from the postmaster's desk? The harbor master, I'm sorry.
They failed to respond to me.
Okay, but you are the legitimate authority for-
Correct.
Does the governor has a legal role in the-
No, the governor is not directly involved in the process whatsoever. However, the, I think on a quarterly basis or thereabouts, we have a safety and security meeting and issues that we encounter are routinely raised. And one of the issues that I raised was that I was continually reaching out to the operators for the Salem ferry and have not received a response.
Okay, you, you may not wish to answer for the governor. Would the security that we're speaking about comes under the constitutional rule for security? That the meeting that you have, is it under that?
Yes, that's correct.
Umbrella?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Another question we have for you, what about the ferry that operated in March? You may have the MV Deluxe.
Deluxe.
If you wish to speak to us on that and its requirement for approval.
So we were in lockstep with access and procurement on that particular activity. The, I wanna maybe just add some more to what was said by the access coordinator earlier with regards, you know, the safety of a vessel. So safety is not to be compromised, period. So a smaller vessel does not necessarily mean that it is less safe. There's a direct correlation between the size of the vessel and the comfort of the ride. That is beyond my remit. We are strictly concerned with the safety aspects of the vessel. The vessels that were under consideration were primarily anguilla vessels. We had a personal look, physical look at the vessels. We looked at all the certificates and we were happy that they met the standard. We must note, however, that despite us being happy with the certificates, Antigua will do their due diligence. So when the vessel arrived in Antigua, the vessel was boarded and inspected. The inspectors there were unhappy with some minor aspects that we were able to correct overnight and the vessel was able to sail the following day. I think the matter there was, you know, some lighting that they were unhappy with, current charts for navigation, they were unhappy with what was there. So those were addressed and the vessel was allowed to sail. The reason why I'm saying this is just to underline the fact that if the Jadon Sun was approved, right, when it got to Antigua, same thing would have happened. They were going to board and inspect. If not immediately, sometime thereafter, they would have boarded and inspected.
And based on previous experience, the captain and owner would be aware of that?
Any competent mariner would be aware of that.
Okay. Now regarding a statement you made about safety and comfort, what is safety? Is safety getting the vessel from one port to the other? Is that just getting there, being able to get from one port to the other without sinking, without, without? What is safety?
The-
Safety for whom?
I don't want to be subjective.
Yes.
The, our concern is whether or not the vessel can make it safely from one port to the next. The passengers may be uncomfortable, you know, that's not strictly speaking a safety matter.
So if the passengers are sick and vomiting and, you know, in real bad state when they get to the other end, that's not a matter of-
That's not a matter for the Munshat Maritime Administration. That is a matter for the access
Okay.
and the type of vessel that they select for the voyage. So that's totally outside our remit.
So that's not a concern for your meetings with the governor that you have monthly or whatever? That's not a concern?
We don't have access meetings, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. The issue, no, no, safety that you discuss with the governor present only deals with getting the vessel from one place to the other.
Correct, as per my remit.
Good. That's what I want to be clear on.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Anything else? You said earlier that, you spoke about the international regulations and obligations. I just want to be clear. Does Munshat have any limitations to fulfilling its obligations? Because of its small size, because of its port or whatever infrastructure you have, is there any limitation that-
Of course, there'd be limitations. We've got capacity issues, but that is why we would undertake to have a signed MOU with other territories that has got the human capacity to assist us with these issues. Separately, the the regulatory, the legal framework must be in place to address a number of issues. I spoke earlier about the fact that there are maybe some seven bills and twelve regulations that are being reviewed by the Attorney General Chambers, which is just an effort to overhaul the existing maritime legislation, you know, bring them into modern sort of terminology and applicability. So of course, we've got issues as a, as a small state, a small developing state.
But barring having this legislation in place, does that mean that we do not comply?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. Comply to what?
Well, if these regulations are required and we don't have them in place, what does that mean?
So the vessel does not operate in isolation. So the due diligence that we're undertaking, right, is mindful of the fact that even though a number of the IMO conventions are not extended to Munshat, a vessel that is operating between Munshat and Antigua would be subjected to them and have to apply. So it would be in the national interest to ensure that these vessels are in compliance.
Is there, I asked about infrastructure. Is there any deficiency in infrastructure?
And I would have said that we certainly have a deficiency in human capacity, which we address administratively.
Infrastructure, infrastructure.
Physical infrastructure?
I'm asking, yes.
The, I'm going to take that question in its broader sense. And of course, there is, or there are physical limitations. And for that, I'm just gonna make reference to other IMO conventions which have not yet been extended to Munshat, Maupol for argument's sake, where that's dealing with maritime pollution. We certainly do not have enough infrastructure, but we certainly do have some tier-one oil spill response capability. So yes, there are deficiency gaps.
The deficiency gaps, you were mentioning some of those are related to our human resource capacity as well?
Sorry?
Before you answered, Mr. Honorable Romeo, on the infrastructure element, you were explaining to us that there is a deficiency in capacity as well?
Yeah.
Can you tell us about that?
The the lifeblood of the whole system is based on having competent surveyors because they're on the, they're on the shelf. is based on having competent surveyors, because they're on the, they're on the shop edge. Despite all the regulations that you may have, right, these are the individuals who go out, physically look at the vessel, look at the certificates, have got the experience and the knowledge to say, okay, fine, this vessel is safe to operate. We are developing our resources, but of course, everything takes time.
So we do not have any local surveyors?
We don't have any qualified local surveyors so far.
And my question again is to, how do, how would such deficiencies affect us in fulfilling our international obligations?
It won't. So for argument's sake, and I'm hoping I'm not speaking out of turn here, the, in our current engagement with access and procurement for the vessel, we have an agreement which should be fully executed today by the, the potential or the preferred ferry operator, the surveyor, who's the principal surveyor in Cayman and the government of Montrat, to undertake the inspection of the vessel. I really do not want to speak out of turn, but once that gets executed, we expect to have the surveyor on site this coming Sunday to commence the, the pre-contract due diligence work, which would extend over Monday and Tuesday next week. We are of course hopeful for a positive outcome, but that is the state of play as we stand.
We are, not, not to prolong, we are in the process of constructing port facilities. In terms of, we, we had, and if that's not within your remit, then please let us know. In terms of land, what do you call it, landside development? Given that the Port Authority, they would, we would have to engage that. Is, is, is that on the table? In respect of your role as perhaps port manager in this case, your role would change from?
Yes, the project. The project in and of itself does not include any landside development. However, there are some benefits that we are, we are deriving from the work that's ongoing. The, there's fill material that is required while the jetty is, is, is being constructed. I think all of us in driving down Davie Hill and across Cars Bay would have seen the, a portion of the hill just adjacent to the ferry terminal being torn down. The contractor is querying that material, which is gonna be used as fill material. The benefit for the port is that it now creates space that can be used. And that space has been identified for use by the marine police, the Department of Environment and Port Health. During COVID, we've all would have been aware that we've got Port Health officers, you know, doing checks and there were no facilities for them. So one of the, the benefits of the work that's ongoing is that we will now have an area where we could house the marine police, the Department of Environment, they've got a bio, biosecurity unit. I think that they're working to establish and Port Health will be able to get accommodation erected for them in, in that area. The, this is not speculation, I suppose they'll have to get it funded, but certainly the, the architects at MCWLE have already drawn up some tentative plans as to how the area could be used. But in response to your question specifically, this is just a, a benefit of the project itself and an integral part of the project. It was not designed that way. It's, it's just a result of the work that's ongoing, that we're prudently taking advantage of the space that will be, that will become available. Sorry.
Are there any direct benefits or challenges?
As a result of that work that's ongoing?
That's work, yes.
The, there are benefits because the, those institutions, departments that are made reference to, they would have fit-for-purpose accommodation, they'd be able to undertake the duties more effectively. The biosecurity unit, of course, these days we are very concerned about invasive species. You know, they'd be able to, you know, do their work a little bit more effectively. The marine police, they are in very cramped accommodation, sharing with border security. They now would have, you know, accommodation, you know, that is fit for, for, for their operations.
Are you involved, how intimately are you involved in the new port design and, and?
The, the design or the construction? I mean, it, it is a design-build contract and the original requirements for the facility would have come out of consultations, government events or consultations with tourism largely identifying the niche, tourism niche that they're, they want to exploit, the typical vessel size, and that would have driven the design parameters on, on the, on the port. Of course, there, there are funding considerations and constraints, but the primary assumption would be what tourism niche market does the government of Montrat want to serve in the national interest? So, once that was identified, we would of course, as one of the stakeholders, you know, provide some feedback onto the, the draft that's required and such like. The, in terms of the operational phase of, of the project, we meet every week with Meridian Construction in, in conjunction with the, the project coordinator. So we're, we're very involved on, on going basis in terms of what is happening and not just in an informal way. We've, we've got fixed meetings every Monday at two thirty with the contractor, where we engage on the, the work that was done, the, the work that is upcoming, the scheduled work as per the project plan and any operational issues that we may have while they're undertaking construction on one hand and we are endeavoring to keep a, a working port open.
I just looked at my notes and noticed you said something when speaking of regulation, international requirements, or something happening in 2013?
Yes. The, my, my reference to 2013 was the Merchant Shipping Registration Act.
Yes.
So in real terms, that's when we started to overhaul the maritime legislation in, in Montrat. But in short order, I expect over the next couple of months, we'll be undergoing a more significant overhaul while we, when we get to introduce the, the seven bills and the 12 sets of regulations for, for consideration.
Okay. You didn't make reference for any other reason?
No, no.
Great, thank you.
No.
Yes.
Given that we are talking about access and the, given we are speaking about access and the enhancing of access and you're integrally involved, from your perspective and you're mature enough to know what you can speak about and what you cannot, how do you see, do you see it as enhancing? Particularly what one is concerned about is the docking in rough, rough season, when the, when the tide, when the waves are high and, you know, we've had the experiences of ferry having to go back to Montrat or trying to, to dock in, in, in town? If you can share.
Quite frankly, the, the new facility is a lot more than what we, we had. But in ideal terms, maybe it's less than what we need, but that is not necessarily a negative. The, in, in terms of our current development, the further enhancements, further enhancements to the, the, the new jetty would be helpful. If we had a full breakwater, it certainly would help. However, the, we need to look at the totality of the situation. The, the new jetty does offer significant sheltering to the existing jetty. So whereas you don't expect a jetty primary focus to be as a breakwater, there will be some of the benefits on the existing jetty. So I do expect that even if we have rough water, we should be able to accommodate a ferry alongside the existing jetty. Some of the works that was already done, the existing jetty, there's been some dredging works there to increase the draft. There was significant silting since a period of time where, when it was constructed. So the dredging would allow us to more safely berth ferry and even some cargo vessels, some of the container vessels that we have on, on the, the existing jetty and in rough weather still get some benefit from the, the new jetty. We may not be able to use the new jetty in its full capacity during rough weather, but we certainly would have an enhanced capability at the existing jetty as a side effect of the, of the new jetty.
Did I hear you correctly? Correctly, you said it will be better, but not necessarily what we need?
The, I, I don't think I said that.
Okay, that's why I want to be clear.
The, I think, you know, just speaking frankly, any, any reasonable thinking person must conclude that if you've got a jetty with a full breakwater, that is more functional than a, a jetty with just subshore protection. I think, you know, that's a given.
So is that what we need?
If, if we need or.
Is what you just described what we need, what is reasonable?
So you, you're asking me this in a professional capacity or as a, as a, as a montrat national?
No, I, I just said what you said before. You repeated what you said and I want to be clear, I want some clarity. Is what you're now describing as what's reasonable what we need?
The, I wouldn't say it's a difficult question, but the, the, like, like I would have mentioned prior, you know, I, I need to make some distinction between my, my professional capacity and my personal capacity.
Please, please feel free.
In, in my personal capacity, of course, we'd always want more.
Not one, need.
Well, the, you, you need to balance a whole number of facts or factors. So the, and, and it is something that's absolute, something that you just must have. But access to a country is not via a single mechanism. So you've got the access that you've been speaking about for the last two days and I think even continued this morning. So if you want to look at it in isolation, you know, I think that, that would be, that would be unfair. So I'd, I would say that is not necessarily a, a, a question that lends itself well to a simple answer in, in a public forum. You know, you, you've got to, you know, pose a number of, of factors and facts, you know, from the national perspective, what, what else is going on and not look at a single piece of infrastructure in isolation.
Do you have any concerns that they exist then because Port Authority would still be there when we do finish the construction of our new port facilities or jetty facilities?
So this would be pollution from arriving vessels? Can you clarify just?
Yes, pollution from arriving vessels or because of the work that is constructed now that may result?
The, the last town hall meeting which was held in Lookout, I think, last week, one of the persons attending spoke to the loss of some of the fill material the, that, that had occurred. It's unfortunate that it occurred, yes, but it's, it's a risk, you know, when you're undertaking marine construction. And I would not look at it as pollution per se. Yes, we would have had some additional sedimentation that would have impacted maybe the dredging works that would have gone on, but in, in the grand scheme of things, when, when we have a torrential downpour and we drive down, you know, braids into Cars Bay, we could see all the, 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 the material that would have come down the gut and that's gone out into the sea. And, you know, that, that's inevitable, you know, it happens on an ongoing basis. It just so happens that because of the work that's been done on, on the construction of the new jetty, that there, there's a lot of material that was susceptible to wave action based on the time of year. But I would not consider it pollution per se.
Seeing that you're here, one last question regarding the, the port facility and that you're so intimately involved and knowledgeable. Will the port continue to be able to serve fishermen or better serve them? The leisure craft, the ferry and cargo and tourists visiting? Are you satisfied that, so, that you would be better able to facilitate all of the above?
The, two, two parts of your comment, I want to separate them. We'd be better able to serve all of you. We'd be better able to serve most of the above. The, the pleasure craft, the cargo vessels, the passenger vessels. We certainly would, would have a significant increased capacity to, to deal with those, with those sectors. However, the, the fishermen, it does not improve their lot significantly.
Okay, and yachts?
The, the yachts right now, I think we, we could improve the, the, the attractiveness of Montrat as a, as a destination if we're able to offer moorings. No yachty really wants to be, or shouldn't say don't want to be. Their preference is not to be on anchor overnight. You'd much prefer that you're tied up to a buoy. However, Little Bay, the, the real estate there is tight. We have to work with the limitations that we have. So if, for argument's sake, you, you had the fishermen on moorings there, you, you've got beach cores, you've got cargo and passenger operations, you've got excursions. The, the real estate is just limited. So there, there is a limit to what could be done. But if I had to speak frankly and in the national interest, then the, the fishermen certainly would, would benefit from a facility that is outside the current port environments, that they could operate more freely on a daily basis.
And to increase real estate would mean taking the port itself further out to sea?
No, no. No, the, we, we, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have clarified. On the maritime side, we, there's only so much space in the water.
Yes.
Yeah. So we could only accommodate so many different sectors comfortably.
What I'm saying is if the main dock or breakwater were to be out further, would it increase the real estate?
Not, not significantly, no.
Okay, okay.
We, we would need to think about going course wise. So instead of developing seaward, you, you. you, you'd want to develop down the coastline.
Okay.
Towards Pipers Pan and beyond.
Okay, all right. I think that's it.
Mr. Gao, thank you so much again for your patience. I want to thank you on behalf of the committee again for your patience and for contributing this committee's work. We, as we say, we may request documents from you, um, if on reviewing our notes, we, we need them. Um, anything we have to? No. Um, there was one, one observation where we looked at your website that maybe what could be helpful is to... Okay. Yes, we will, we will, um, we saw what you had on your website. And no one made comments because we're not really here for that. But we figured that is quite good and, um, reference to the conventions would also help. Um, so that people, persons understand because I, I suppose more persons would now visit the website having heard that they're all listed there and want to understand where did this one originate? And you also made references some conventions. So we want to compliment the port on its, on its website and the work. And thank you so much again for attending this session.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee Members, Clark.
Thank you, Professor.
And we'll consider.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, excellent. Good afternoon, Captain Johnny. I, on behalf of the committee, I wish to thank you as well for your patience. You've been here this morning and you've returned again this afternoon to assist the committee. So if you'd be so kind as to, as you notice, I call you Captain Johnny. So for the record, can you give us your full name and your role?
Okay, good afternoon. My name is John Howes. I'm a Monsurian and I have been in and around the ocean most of my life. I was in nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine. I was trained by UNDP FAO in Barbados and Jamaica. I went to the college with what was then called CAS, now called UTEC, to do my, um, theory. And my practical was done from kayak, French kayak fishing, all aspects of all types of fishing from kayak, South, uh, South America, right around to Honduras, Nicaragua. And fished a lot around Jamaica and around the other islands in the Caribbean. Since that, I have, I migrated in nineteen seventy-five to Canada. And from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen eighty-seven, I worked on the Great Lakes, um, a light icebreaker, buoy tender, aids to navigation. And I was a quartermaster, uh, seaman and gained quite a bit of experience from there. And then after I left the Coast Guard, I did several jobs in Canada. In the meantime, I attended numerous, almost twice a year, fisheries expos and seminars to keep up to date in all aspects of fisheries and other marine instruments and so forth. Um, I'm here today because I have a love for my homeland and I see certain things transpiring that I don't feel comfortable with. And I think that I am going to speak out about them because they need to be put out in the community so we know what's going on. A lot of people don't know anything about the ocean or marine and they, they just hear about things. And as we have witnessed in the past three days, the rules and regulations that have come out for air traffic and marine traffic. So I, I wrote up something here and I would like to read it. So I, I would like you to, um, to hear what I'm saying and at any time you can, you have a question, you can ask me, no problem. Yes. So I'm here today to discuss and state my views about access to and from Little Bay Port by sea. Also give my views on the present state of the construction of our new wharf breakwater. History and background, presently Little Bay, at Little Bay, there is an emergency temporary wharf that which was constructed to assist the transfer of Monsurians who wanted to escape the Soufaya Hills volcano during the height of the volcanic eruptions. Now this wharf is now actually being utilized as our main landing port for cargo, ferry, cruise ship passengers, yachtsmen and fishers. Because it was only built as a temporary wharf, it is too small and the water around it too shallow to allow large, um, large or, or it's not, around it is, is too shallow to allow large or deep enough to allow cruise ships or deep draft cargo vessels to come alongside. There are several, several weekly visits from roll-on-roll-off container ships which offload and at the end of the present wharf. The port also is not protected from large seas, especially the frequent northerly seas, which at times comes directly over the top of the wharf. It is also not protected from frequent tropical storms, hurricanes, et cetera. Now, note, it is a fact that yachts have been, are warned by their insurers that they will not, and you can, you can check it, yachtsmen can, are not, um, covered for any damage or loss of their vessel um, coming into Monsrat's waters. Uh, the charts and route books also state that it's, there is no safe anchorage in any of the bays around Monsrat. I will also note here that the fishers do not have any insurance coverage for their vessels and cannot get coverage with, with, um, which are moored in the harbor. Some of these fishers have lost their vessels due to them breaking their moorings or being stolen because they're in the open. Um, so the bad weather and high winds, rains and so forth can cause them to get adrift. Now, on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, a contract was signed between the government of Monserrat. And I will just use the word Millennium Marine, uh, you can say Meridian Marine. So I'm just saying in this particular thing, between Millennium Marine, Stantec, to design and build a breakwater wharf and the contract ending April, twenty twenty-four. On June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, there was a big groundbreaking sod-turning event held at the ferry terminal for the design and building of our new port. In attendance were representatives from the builder designers, FCDO, our funding agency, CDB, the Honorable Governor Turner and government ministers of Monserrat. The governor, in her address to the public in this event, stated, quote, she, that she will be holding Millennium Stantec to the deadline of their contract. I will interject here that our, that our premier, Honorable Joseph Farrell Taylor went to Miami, Florida to attend the Sea Trade Cruise Global Conference on Monday, twenty-fifth April through twenty-eighth April, twenty twenty-three, with a team from tourism, et cetera. At this conference, the premier Farrell highlighted to the cruise operators that Monsrat will be building a new port development with breakwater with facilities for small cruise ships to dock and offload their passengers, whether permitting, for the twenty twenty-four season. Now, at the last town hall meeting, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at the Lookout School Auditorium, present, presented by the Millennium Marine in conjunction with Mr. Patterson and Mr. Foster, engineers for the government of Monserrat, seconded to work with Millennium Marine and represent the, 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 the Monserrat's interest in the project. Now, at this meeting, during their presentations, Mr. Foster stated, um, Millennium's contract expires on April twenty-four. Right after his presentation, the manager of Millennium Corp. stated that his company will start construction of the roll-on-roll-off in March of next year, which should, which should finish sometime in April. They will then start construction of the wharf and breakwater. This is March, April of next year. An attendant at the town hall meeting stood up and asked a question of the panel. Quote, "It is apparent that there is a lack of communication between the government of Monserrat and Millennium Stantec." The manager during this meeting had also stated that the science was now only ninety percent complete. In my view, this seems unacceptable. I will state here the fact that the port contractor has had over seven months in Little Bay of very calm seas, which is surprising for Little Bay. In his presentation, he stated the delays were out of his control and the, the next mo- and, and the next morning, Discover Monsrat stated in their daily presentation that Millennium has stated it is expecting to need an additional six months to finalize the construction, which would put completion up to November, December, twenty twenty-four. Now I will say here that I and other older fishers had warned Millennium many times the fact that the northerly seas will, not might, will destroy the causeway from the base of, of the old wharf to where they proposed to build the roll-on-roll-off and the new wharf breakwater area. Without any form of protection in front of it, now, today, hundreds of tons of shawl, dirt and stones that put, that were put on the causeway has been washed back into Little Bay waters. And I'm sure the trench dredged by the ship has been come, quite filled with it. This is, has caused an environmental disaster, polluting our reefs, shores and seabottom. In the interim period between now and April, when the wharf should be constructed, start construction, it is scheduled to begin, what, um, that is scheduled to begin. What is going to happen to the dredged seabed? Because the sediment movement associated with northerly seas is, is Millennium, Millennium going to bring back the suction dredge at a greater cost to the project? I wish to note here that I have warned both Millennium and government representative, Mr. Patterson. This is another warning about the two large overhanging, cracked, overburdened cliffside. One at the beginning of the wharf causeway and the other one at the end where they plan to build the, um, wharf. Now, Monsrat is prone to earthquakes and God forbid that anyone is under the cliff or if they happen to finish the wharf and they have not rectified it, that a busload of cruise ship passengers be under the, the, the rocks when they come down and hit the cruise ship. Seeing all the vibrations from earth-moving equipment and rollers, I'm interested to know what measures are going to be taken to protect Little Bay ecosystem from contin- continued contamination from the mud debris from the fall failed, from the failed causeway. This damage was only caused by a, the damage two weeks ago was, was only caused by northerly and northeasterly seas between four to six feet high. These are small in comparison to some of the waves that would normally come with northerly seas. And I will note here that when, when you have northerly seas, the space between one wave and the next one is between six and eight seconds, right? So, um, this is not, um, so, okay. I saw the, when, when this wave action begun and start washing away the causeway, I saw the crew from Millennium scrambling to remove their boats, excavators, loaders and silt boom off the causeway. This was not a tropical storm or hurricane. And seeing as from now, September until April of next year, we can expect, expect more northerly seas. And I will start now with access. Uh, do you have any questions so far? Okay. Access by ferry, cruise ships and yachts. Because the area dredged will, will allow, as we just learned five minutes ago from the manager, port manager, that there is a limited amount of space within Little Bay. The area dredged will take up a lot of the area where the cruise ships were, uh, the, the yachts would anchor. So, um, what is to happen to the yachts? So I'm saying here now that the, because the area dredge will not allow very limited mooring, anchoring area for yachts that visit. So when the cargo ships or cruise ships decides to access, approach and berth at the new port, no yacht or fishing boat could or should be in the area of the dredged trench access to the wharf. So what the yachts, what are the yachts and especially the fishers supposed to do? So far, in all the town hall meetings and personal contact with Monsrat government ministers, the fishermen are an afterthought. As I have stated earlier, the fishers have no insurance and are offered, are now offered trailers. Well, not many of the fishers have a truck or can drive. And, um, so a trailer is good to put the boat on if lifted on by a crane, but they have nothing, no vehicle to pull the trailer to point A to point B to launch it. And the other alternative is to anchor outside where the police launch is, which is a far distance to row, especially with the, the winds a little bit come off the shore. So to row, come back from your boat, um, in the small tender, the small lifeboat. Um, it's very hard and if you break an oar, you can go adrift. My last point about the birthing of, of the cruise ships, I personally don't think any... Yes. I have made the suggestion to Mister Patterson and to um way back since um Mister Dion Weeks was the government representative when they were going to be building the wharf and they had offers from many different companies to build the wharf. I told him, A, the wharf needs to go further out. And this is back in the beginning before any contract signed. And he said, oh, no, C D B does not want to build a wharf close to the bats. They want to protect the bats. So that is why, if you look, when you drive down to Little Bay, you can see a white placard on the wall of the cliff. And it says, do not venture close to here because we are monitoring the bats. So, I said, well, where the wharf is, turn the wharf at least six to eight degrees out into towards the ocean. That way, you don't have to dredge, the water is deep, and the ships can come in. It leaves more space for other vessels that would use the old wharf. And he said, oh, it's a foregone conclusion, that's the way it is, and they will get a company to design and build it. I also told him that for the fishermen, what can happen is you get a ship, a big ship's anchor chain, and you take two cement blocks, two ten thousand pound cement blocks. You have the equipment here right now to dig a hole and put the cement block down in there so it is buried, it's not above the height of the bottom. And you run a chain from that to another block. And if you have what's called a shot of chain, it's ninety feet, you have three shots of chain, you can facilitate and what you do, you put a smaller chain coming up to the surface with a float and you can put a fishing boat every thirty feet apart and tie them there. So they're tied close to the buoy so they're not swinging a big arc. And you can facilitate a closed area. So you put that inside the dredged area, and because the chain, the two blocks are buried, the boats cannot drag it because it's buried, and the boats will be there tomorrow morning when you wake up. Presently, the boats that are moored out there, when there is high wind tonight, they do not know if the boat will be there tomorrow morning. Some of the boats are mount have a mount on it, whether a satellite tracker on it, but not all of the boats. And the person who has the code to direct the coast guard where to go to look for this vessel is not on island, he spends more time off island than on island. So what happened now is nobody else has that code to look to see where their vessel is. And so there is something wrong with that picture. Now, um, I. Sorry, I talked and I touched something. Okay. My last point is about the berthing of the cruise ships. I personally don't think any cruise ship captain will risk bringing in their ship alongside the new wharf. If there is any strong winds or seas, he will not feel comfortable taking that risk. The only ships that would feel comfortable are the roll on roll offs. Um, the captains of them, they would be happy. And I also note here that the fact that the yachts do wind up spending, and this is based for talking about who spends money, the cruise ships or the yachts. The cruise ship, the cruise ship passengers, most of them, take a package tour. So they get off the boat, they get on a bus, they go for their tour, and they come back and they land and then go straight back to the the ship. Now, the yacht yacht person comes in, he clears customs, and then he wants to buy groceries, so he hires a taxi. He buys groceries, so the supermarket gets money, buys water, and maybe he wants to take a tour of the buried city or so forth, he hires a taxi for that. So, they they are eating rough on a yacht. When they come ashore, they want to eat a nice meal at a restaurant, so they spend money there too. So the economy benefits more from individual yatters than from cruise ships. Granted, when they come into port, the port gets a fee, the pilot gets a fee, and if when they now come into a port that is that they can come alongside, the the linesman get fees, money too, and where they tie up to the dolphin, that person gets an extra fee. So money is spent there. Now, I've made this presentation, and um I would like to touch just a little bit on the air sea access. And when the Shamrock Police Launch was, what's the name of it now? Um, the Haliconia, Haliconia Star. When she she came to Monserat, it was stated that the reason they got a big vessel is because the flights between Antigua and Monserat, ninety five percent of the time, it's over water. And we all heard here that the planes are over fifty years old. I'm not, as the old people say, put a goat mouth on it, but it can happen. We have had an engine stall have a malfunction just a couple of months ago. Now, if pre tell, a plane was to go down and landed perfectly on the water. Now, I have spent most of my life on the ocean, and I do not wish this on my worst enemy, that the last flight coming into Monserat has to make a wet landing. And we have to wait now for the Haliconia Star to come up to rescue us. It's now night, they have spotlights, and they can come and rescue you. But in the back of my mind and the people who are passengers is they are worried because you're bound to get scratched and bumped. So you are now in the water, and the fright is there from sharks, not drowning sharks. And night is coming, you put at nighttime in the ocean, you put your hand in front of your face like that if there's no light around and you can't see your hand. And the only thing in your mind is yelling and praying. So, bearing that in mind, a couple of weeks ago, the police launch left Monserat for six weeks to go on dock. It came back for one week and then went again for another week. Now, my observation is that no capable vessel was moored alongside the dock to leave in an emergency. Presently, when the sand miners are loading their barges in Plymouth, by law, they have to have a vessel capable of holding the the workers, the truck drivers, to escape there. Now, you have a yacht, a plane going down, and to go and hook up a trailer to a boat, come down, first you got to get the men all together, hook up the trailer to the boat and to and and to the truck, and then launch it, and then go. And a lot of the vessels that they could hire do not have spotlights on it. So that vessel is supposed to be moored. When the police launch is not there, it's supposed to be moored alongside the wharf for quick emergency exit. And that is part of what's on my mind. Um, little things like this, people don't observe and they don't remember that stipulated when they brought the the boat into Monserat, it was there for emergency services.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On that very last point you made, is it a requirement to have a vessel that can rescue people? Should there be a a crash overseas, whether day or night?
Yes. Plus, this vessel is called Coast Guard. I spent ten years in the Coast Guard on the Great Lakes. I know what Coast Guard is.
So if there is no vessel of that nature available to rescue persons, should there be a crash? Should the airport continue to be open or be operated?
It is stipulated that in the airport, laws, this is part of inquiry, check that. It is part that they they there must be an emergency response vessel handy in case of that happening.
Is that a point? Is that the point you're trying to make?
Yes.
And have you made this point publicly before?
I said it on last night, not intricately like that, but I just mentioned it last night on.
Have you heard it mentioned at any other time?
No, none. Nobody, nobody said anything.
I know it's been mentioned, but so I just want to be clear, we're focused on what you're I'm saying here. And at present, is the Haliconia Star out there?
Yes, it is presently on work.
And you said it wasn't here for several weeks?
Yes.
And during those weeks, you're saying?
No vessel was moored alongside the wharf to be utilized in case of emergency response.
Are you saying there was a vessel that was requisitioned but not placed beside the pier?
It might have been requisitioned, but by by law, it was supposed to be both alongside the wharf, ready for a quick response. Um, I'm not saying there wasn't, but it wasn't in the yard of the port, let's put it that way.
How many vessels do we have on island that can serve that purpose?
It all depends on what, because you see, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Monseratian plane.
I know, Monserat, no, no, Monserat is small.
Yeah.
There are not many people who have boats of.
There there are several boats.
How many vessels, you know?
To get the boat, get the owner of the boat to get, as we say, pad up and get ready to go, right? Or tick, 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 night coming in.
I'm trying to understand from your expertise.
Yes.
Which of the vessels that you know on island would be equipped even if they were to have the lights to do such a rescue?
Well, there are three or four.
Three or four?
Yeah.
Okay.
You see, the vessel that they take into Plymouth with the sand mining, that is for day service. And it's there, you see the volcano there, there in the port, right beside the barge, and they can see everything going on, right? Before any alarms, they can see.
So it'd be easy for us to find out whether a vessel is requisitioned or was requisitioned during that period or not? And the second thing would be to know whether it was put in place?
It was not in the port.
Okay, well, so but we can find out?
Yes.
Captain Johnny, so you're saying the port is the appropriate place? That it should be in the event of a air crash?
The the launching ramp, slipway, it's called, is there. You can tie up to the port, it's there, and with security and everything else. So all one would need to do is to go into the vessel, turn the key, start it up, and go to the proposed spot. I I'll I'll say that I pray that we're not building a marine version of the John Alfred husband airport. Because if they're going to wait until April of next year to build this wharf, what happened is that in the meantime, the northerly seas are going to going to be, they may not be big, and we have been fortunate for the past six, seven, seven storms that have passed Monserat. When they get three hundred miles above Barbuda, they turn up into the north and away from the Caribbean. So we have been fortunate, but fortune only lasts that long. And what I can say is that, um, I, as a hobby, for the past fifteen or twenty years, as a hobby, I put out weather reports. And one of Monserat's previous premiers depends on it because he was called into a meeting when he was in in power and for the meeting of the governor and the M C A. And he told the governor that the volcano, the volcano, the hurricane is going to turn and and just pass over the south end of Monserat, and we will be in no damage. And she told him that, who told him that garbage? She knows better, we're gonna get hit. So he didn't say anything. But the D M C A, they get weather from me every Sunday afternoon. I put it out every Sunday afternoon.
Speaking of weather, how does a port facility protect fishermen and their investments or any other vessels that are owned locally? Um, in general, how would a safe harbor protect them? And how do you anticipate the one being built will protect them?
You 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 started saying one thing, and then you said something else.
Okay, tell me.
Two questions.
That's that's correct. That's correct.
So presently, the port allows us to get a boom truck to come and lift out our vessel. At times, if there is a hurricane coming, years gone by, or storm, the fisheries department would hire the crane or a boom truck, the port crane, to lift out vessels. And then they put it on a flatbed truck and they take it away. They're only responsible taking it out. You're responsible to getting that boat back into the water. That is the only gratuity that the port gives us besides allowing us to come because it's the only port that we can offload our fish catch, et cetera.
Do fishermen's boats get damaged in the process? Uh, and how would a safe harbor um provide better uh coverage for the vessel?
Well, I'll go back to my meeting with Mister Weeks, and I said, the ideal wharf for Monserat would be from the end of rendezvous bluff coming out towards where the Jaden Sun was anchored. That way, the whole of Little Bay would be calm and protected from rough seas. So fishermen having their vessel within the inside of that would have a sheltered port from rough seas, even in storms, unless the storm is coming from the southwest, which can happen. But in day to day stormy weather and not hurricane weather or tropical storm weather, it would have been protected. Presently, as I stated in the beginning, the fishermen have no insurance coverage. Fishermen, when they go to pull up their boat and there's northerly seas, when they constructed the old wharf, the present wharf that's there, they put four la four foot square holes through the wharf. They said that was to release the pressure of the northerly seas coming. But what happens is that when the northerly seas come, it sends a jet of water out through that four foot path uh hole right beside where the the landing steps are. And when a boat goes to come in to be pulled up in the slipway, that jet of water will hit it, and it pushes it up onto the rocks beside the ferry terminal. It has happened, and one of our fishermen, not only got his boat badly badly damaged, he lost an engine in the process, right? Other vessels have been hit up there, et cetera.
What sort of cost are you talking about? How much does an engine cost? What sort of?
Depending on the depending, of course, depending on the size of the engine. Anywhere from forty horsepower. Anywhere from forty horsepower for 29,000 EC dollars in Antigua. And the more, for sixty horsepower, you're talking maybe thirty, thirty-eight or forty thousand.
EC dollars?
EC dollars.
And the vessel itself does damage?
If the vessel is damaged, you have to be able to do fiberglass work. If it's a fiberglass vessel, a wooden vessel, then it's major surgery because you have to take off the planks and re-nail, re-nail it and so forth. It's a lot more work, but a lot. We only have, I think, two, in the roadstead of Isle of Little Bay, we have two wooden boats. There is one of a wooden boat that is launched at, at there, but the guy takes it home at night.
I don't know why, every time you're about to conclude, a question comes to mind. Yes, yes. Earlier, we heard the port manager and the access coordinator basically confirm in their statements, how do you put it, agree in their statements, that with regards to the size of a vessel, whether under 24 meters or greater than 24 meters, it doesn't necessarily dictate the level of safety for the vessel.
True.
And what it does is it also dictate the comfort of the vessel.
True.
Could you explain in your layman terms or your professional experience?
Well, first off, the fishermen of Monserrat, well, I would say back since the time of Jesus, fishermen were scorned. And they're still scorned today. People like to get the fish and they want the red snapper, but to be close to you. It, it's, it's worn, worn off now, but it used to be. When I was growing up and learning to fish, the only co-fishermen that were with me were people who had ex-convicts, who had jail, jail thing, and they couldn't get a job elsewhere and they went to fish. I would say eighty percent. Now, nowadays, we have people who are government employees, policemen, taxi drivers, who are fishermen. So we do have a better quality of fishermen. However, seventy percent of the vessels are not properly equipped in case of an emergency. And I know better because the vessel I go on, it has minimal amount of safety equipment on it. No life jackets, no lights. We are going in daytime and come back in daytime, but emergency can happen. Now, the younger fishermen who have these pierogs with onboard engine, they don't have any oars in case the engine breaks down. We do, we have three oars on board our, the boat I go fishing on. But otherwise than that, the boats of Monserrat need to be inspected. And they have been educated, but because the boat, the vessel is so small, right? You cannot safely store your life jackets and your firefighting, well, not, not even firefighting, but your flares and so forth. Because everything is bing bang bum out there. You're going along at twenty, thirty miles an hour.
Because we're speaking about access, I want to zero in on the means, reason for my question.
Yes.
How does the ferry, MV Deluxe, compare to, say, the Jaden Sun? Once it's properly certified and everything?
Yeah.
How do they compare with, when it comes to safety and comfort? I want to emphasize safety. Is there any issue, is there any advantage that the Jaden Sun, a bigger vessel of that size, would have as far as safety over the smaller vessel with no comfort? Yes. Question is safety.
Well, I will tell you this, there is no comparison between the Jaden Sun and the boat from Anguilla. I have seen the boat in Anguilla when I was in Anguilla, operating. And it's not a safe vessel. When it goes along, the bow is way up in the air like this, the captain cannot see properly. He has, I have seen him and the course between Monserrat Port and St. John's Port. I was fishing off of Margarita Bay. His vessel has no call up there. He went through my parts and cut off one of my parts. Because he cannot see the buoys in front of him because the vessel is going with the bow way up in the air. And when it hit the seas, that is why when it goes in the bigger water now, in what we call the channel, and the boat goes up there and drops, what happened now is that everybody, their stomach come up through their, their face and go back down and they get seasick. The Jaden Sun rides perfectly. You can take a glass of water and put it on, on, on your table like that and it'll stay there.
As far as safety, I'm emphasizing safety. How does not being able to see in front of you affect safety of the passenger?
Well, like I said, the, the riding of the vessel. What happened now is that there could be a log floating in the water, he not see, and hit that at 25 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour. He goes, that, that boat from Anguilla goes at a good clip.
But doesn't it have?
It can break.
Doesn't it, doesn't it have any systems onboard to alert him of a log being ahead?
You, no radar picks up a log at surface level. No radar, none. And a radar picks up metal. A fiberglass boat, if it doesn't have the engine and other things on it, cannot be seen. It has to have something to reflect back, the radar echo. Sends out a pulse and if it hits anything, it bounces back and it shows on the screen.
Okay. Madame Shire, I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much for your presentation and you've highlighted some issues with the committee would be able to reflect upon. And we, that issue with safety and the access and sea safety, you have raised it.
Yes.
We would look at that as well. So thanks again for all and for.
There, there are some others, but I will let them pass.
Yes, well, you can always write those and, and we will consider those. So please free to get them to Madame Clark and we will add them into the record.
And she has something she had to make as well.
Yes, you can, you can share that as well. Madame Clark is, yeah, Dr. Baker.
I would like to give you this, open it later. It's, it's about this, but later.
Give Madame Clark, show Madame Clark. I'm the head? All right, all right. Okay, thank you. I'll take my authority. Thank you so much. You turn off your mic. Mr. Bofong, kindly state your name. And we, we thank you for coming. And you can proceed with your presentation before the committee.
Yeah, my name is Hubert Bofong. And I've always been very interested in the problems we're having at the, the, the.
Can I ask you to just give us a little bio background of your interests for the, for the record?
Of my interests?
Short, yeah. Qualifications, et cetera, in this, in the area that you're going to speak on.
Basically, I'm, I'm a telecommunications engineer from training. But I've veered off into equipment management and that sort of thing. And sand mining and so on. That's where I've, I've ended up at this stage. But I've always had a passion for the air travel problems that we've had here and for the sea access and the, the port development and that sort of thing, right? So that's where I'm basically coming from. So I, I wanted to just read a little presentation I had about the airport side. Because I missed, I missed out on that earlier because of the timing and stuff, yeah. So basically, I have here, from day one, we were told that the JAOOS Airport is the only option the British government was prepared to give Monserrat using twin-rotor aircraft. Take it all even. The concept needed a study by all professionals to build the airport. An EIA study, designers, engineers, and their services were all paid for to build an airport for twin-rotor use. My question is, were we tricked? Was there collusion or are we being bullied by people with might? Something is not right. If there's a road accident or someone breaks into your house, immediately, there's accountability sets in. We need our money back or we need the problem rectified as to what the agreement was. Right? Sometime earlier this week, someone talked about the numbers of people traveling to Monserrat and being somewhere around 20,000 and as if that is a ceiling. I don't believe so. I think the number of people traveling to Monserrat at present, since the present ferry has stopped, is not a true reflection of the number of people who want to travel. The general public do not like traveling on small piston-engine islanders or the proposed Technam eleven-seater weight-restricted aircraft. It does not facilitate small business either. Too expensive and you cannot get a courier box in and out of Monserrat on time. Because what happens is the passenger and their baggage get priority over, 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 over goods, right? So that is, that is a big problem for us who have small businesses in Monserrat. No, no, no parts and special tools and stuff are come, come from Monserrat. Everything has to come from abroad. And, and in the business that we're in, we're exporting material to, you know, out of Monserrat. A lot of money goes to government. Government gets revenue from what we do. Often, machines break and they need parts quickly and we have to wait. Instead of the three-day wait that we used to have for a FedEx item to come in or DHL also to come in, it's now down to 10 days or 15 days, depending on the number of passenger load comes in on these small planes. That's one side. The other side I want to talk about is that, is the manufacturing of these, of the twin-rotor aircraft that has come back on stream. The twin-rotor was made, first made in, in 1965, did well. They stopped making it in, in, in 1988. And the prices of the used equipment, the old, old twin-rotors rose and you couldn't get one to buy until another company, Viking, decided to, hey, we can't let this product die. And the Viking bought out the rights to start remaking twin-rotors and began producing them up to now. And right now, today, I just got a message off, off, off the internet there that the original company, Twin-rotor, De Havilland, has restarted making the twin-rotor aircraft again, right? So I like to say, whenever a manufacturer restarts production of a particular product, for example, the twin-rotor, not changing the original concept, but just tweaking, adding finesse and more powerful engines. Glass cockpit and, you know, finesse on and everything. Reducing the, reducing the weight of the twin-rotor as well and making more powerful engines increases the equipment's performance, right? This, this says a lot, right? And it's, it's the demand in the world which created these companies, like De Havilland, the original company, and Viking, the other company too. It's the demand that the world has made these people start remaking this product. And guess what? They're making them almost to the same standard, but just a little bit better. That's, that's crazy. So that means the engineers, the second set of engineers have looked over it and agreed it and okayed it, right? So, you know, when they're making a, 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 that, that kind of product to that level, it, it just tells you that the, the product had to be very good or properly designed in the first place to be, to have a restart or remake of, of such a thing, right? And parts must be available. Because if you're making a product, they must have, must be able to support the, the thing. This is not so for the islander. So we cannot at all be looking at a line islander for continued service and to help Monserrat to, to come out of this dilemma that we're in. As a matter of fact, if we had a twin-rotor service right now in Monserrat, if we had two twin-rotors running back and forth, doing other runs for the other neighboring islands and occasionally, and, you know, coming and doing the morning and afternoon run for Monserrat, we wouldn't be having this meeting. We would not, I, I very much doubt we'd be here having this meeting and all this time we have to waste, people, everybody putting in the energy to, 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 to get a proper result, right? So that's on that side. The other side, in terms of deliveries and so, like I said before, packages are taking, instead of three days to get a courier service in, it's taking 10 days and so on, right? This is, this is, this is poor for business on our, on our behalf. Being unable to make a quick run to another island because just having five available, available seats, five and six available seats on a plane to go to Monserrat, you have to book weeks in advance, you can't get there. And then you probably miss out on the opportunity that you're trying to catch with somebody with a sale or, 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 or purchase or whatever. It really makes it difficult to tell the truth, you know? Especially even, even if we're trying to sell out, send out samples to other, other, other islands and so on. The juggling is, is, is really, really bad. So I wanted to say those points on, on that.
Just a moment. When you speak of samples, you're talking from the sand mining industry or?
Yes, yes. In the sand mining industries, at times, people want to have a, a look or a physical feel or touch or. or a physical feel or touch or test the material. So that we will send maybe half a bucket of material to their country, you know? But then again, we have to wait on space available on the plane, you know? Business doesn't work like that. Because somebody else, they can find somebody else who can supply, they're gone with you, you know? So I wanted to present that on the air, on the that side.
Do you do any business whatsoever with the ferry service? Given that you want quick service, I can imagine the bi-monthly service on that way, there's a ferry that provides that or ferry boat that provides that service?
Yes, the ferry, yes. The answer to the question is yes. We often send parts to Antigua or heavy boxes, large, you know, awkward-sized boxes. We have to get them coming on the ferry, the boat that comes in every two weeks. It's awkward because it's every two weeks. And sometimes you're at the end of one line, you have to wait 14 days for it to come, right? So it's very awkward sometimes, you know?
Again, you're saying that also impedes business, doing business with...
Oh, yes, very much. Because 14 days is a long time to wait for something. Antigua has machine shops, a machine shop, for instance, in which we can send a piece of metal to Antigua to get a machine to a particular size. And, you know, so we'll send it to Antigua, but we have to wait for the boat. That maybe, that might have gone last week or it might have just left. Then you have to wait the whole time, you see? And then on the return, the same thing, you see?
About a month.
Yeah, you understand?
That could turn out to be about a month and you need that for the business.
Correct.
For the machinery here.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Could you tell me how many other sand miners there are on island like yourself?
There are three others active at this moment, like ourselves.
Would you say what you say here represents their concerns as well?
Yes.
And challenges?
Yes, they go through the same thing.
Would you say that what you're saying here represents the challenges that many businesses apart from sand miners on Monserrat face?
Yes.
Why do you say that?
Well, if something is bigger, is fairly heavy, more than 20 pounds or 30 pounds, the price goes up tremendously at the airport. You might not be able to afford it, right? You really need ease of travel to transport these things. When we had a ferry, when we had the Jaden Sun a few years ago, that was a daily service, except Sunday. We were able to take stuff down and get it to Antigua, maybe go along with it, see that it gets done properly and bring it back next two days and get back on the run, you know? So it greatly affects us.
Someone argue that the ferry is very expensive to run, carrying a few passengers for most of the year, except for the busy periods. Would you say there's a significant benefit to business simply by having the ferry available throughout the year that may itself fill a need?
Agree.
You know, economy that brings a benefit worth having the ferry?
The ferry is, the ferry could be expensive, I can understand. Because perhaps sometimes the number of people traveling on it might be low, okay? But we do need that kind of service in order to keep things running properly, right? A lot of people, a lot of local people depend on it for their business. Not necessarily me, but others depend on it for stuff from Antigua. I heard someone say this earlier today that, I think, the access coordinator was on earlier and he mentioned, you know, they have it once every two weeks instead of once a week. That's a cargo ship. Now, that can also be part because people aren't traveling. When you had the people traveling on the ferry, being able to go to Antigua themselves, you increase the cargo coming back, you understand? I mean, right now, we have the internet, so I can go on WhatsApp and I can tell somebody, look, I want a screwdriver like this, I want a hammer like that, and I show them a picture. But a lot of times, people shop by physically being there. And you see, you buy, you sell. So I think that also hampers, has reduced the flow of cargo, you know, coming in. That's to answer you. But Monserrat is just in a position where, you know, it has to be subsidized and you have to provide a service. Like what I heard one gentleman from the UK say yesterday. We're not a part of, we are UK. That's what I think he said. And therefore, I mean, the buses in the UK, I'm sure, don't run half full and they decide not to do it. They provide a service, they provide a service. The service needs to be provided here the same way. That's what I feel, you know?
Do you have anything to add about the air access issues we discussed? I know you were passionate about that too. Anything to add at all?
Yes, I would like to add that I, I mean, I'm not a pilot, but I've been around enough pilots and airport people, people with airport knowledge and we've shared, they've shared knowledge, experiences and stuff with me to realize something that, I mean, I know the names, they call the threshold and certain things, but what's confusing to me or sounds a bit flip-flop is they put a riser in, which is just a marking on the runway on both ends, 30 feet, 30 meters on both sides, reducing the, what they say, the available runway length to, for calculation. But yet, the aircrafts come to the very end of the runway, turn around, stop, rev up, and then use what they want to take off. But they're not allowed to use that beginning bit as part of their calculations to take off. It's sort of, you're saying one thing on one side and you're saying the other on the other side. But they're using the whole runway because they've gone to the very end. I never seen one of those planes come up 30 meters and stop and then decide to start off from here. It's just a matter of people doing these, holding these, holding these positions, deciding to choose what to do, what not to do. Because then they say, on another side of things, they say, the runway length is in the pilot's discretion when the pilot is ready to do what he has to do. To, I guess, in order to save life, the runway length is in the pilot's discretion. Okay, so it sounds ambiguous for them not to be able to use the whole 600 meters in their calculation. But yet, the planes go to the very end and start off using the whole 600 meters. That sounds not, it doesn't sound good. And it's a human thing. It's just humans doing this thing. Because the runway hasn't physically been shortened. The runway has the complete load, length and strength bearing capacity from the beginning of this end to the end of the other end. So really and truly, it's just humans playing around with words to suit what they want to suit it to do.
Yes, I know, you have just five minutes. The person's, what?
You were asking something about the seaport.
The person who spoke earlier mentioned the fact that we need to have rescue vessels. I just received a WhatsApp message telling me that a FedEx plane crashed between Sabah and St. Martin. And I see pictures of people at sea. I guess there's some sort of rescue that had to take place. You have one of the fishing vessels, I believe, that was referred to, fishing or leisure vessels that might be able to provide rescue if the heliconia were not here. Do you know, or were you recruited to provide the coverage for rescue? Or do you know of any other vessel owner?
No, no one spoke to me about that.
No one spoke to you?
No, but I try to keep my boat as hot as possible, meaning as ready as possible to be able to help somebody. The boat is mine, yes, but I don't want to be selfish like that. I want to be able to help somebody if they need. And I'm ready to go if such and such is needed.
And do you have equipment onboard, lights and the necessary things to rescue?
Well, I have life jackets and bare minimum, I have life jackets for the number of people I usually take. I wouldn't have 19 life jackets, but if something like that were to happen, I'm pretty happy and ready to go and help. You know, if a plane was in the water, I'll be there as soon as I can.
Okay, because of time limitations, I can't ask you any more questions. The time limitation we have.
Ask me one question.
So we will have...
You asked a question about...
I, could I? I'm allowed to ask a question, one or two?
One.
One question. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you want to talk about this. The speaker before spoke about the new port and the real estate space available to yachts and fishermen and, you know, the other vessels and tourist ships, all cargo and ferry. What do you have to say about the present real estate, the amount of space available at the port?
I think it's pretty easy for anybody to see by just going up at the police station, government headquarters, and looking down at Little Bay and Grande Vauxbluff. It is very easy to see that the pier construction should have been on the end of the jetty, as what Johnny Harris said. It should, they should carry that causeway all the way to the very end and turn left and head towards Cards Bay direction, okay? This will maximize or shelter Little Bay for all, you see? What they've done is they've gone halfway out into the bay from the present jetty. They've gone halfway out and decided to build their pier there. So what happens? You lose the rest. You only get whatever is on the inside, you see? So the problem we're trying to get away from, it's a port for cargo ships, tourist ships and stuff like that. But this is Monserrat. Monserrat doesn't have bays like Antigua and Guadeloupe and these other islands that have the shape of an octopus sort of way, with all these coves and so that provides shelter for their fishermen and so on. So what needed to happen was for them to put the pier on the end and extend it the same 130 meters or 180 meters, even 80 meters because they took it out in deeper water. If they even did that, it would create a better shadow on the inside. And the shadow, I mean now, will facilitate the port. The port will have all what it needs for himself. The fishermen can be somewhere else, to the side, all the way down by the beach, somewhere to the side, out of the way. Because what the fishermen really want is just calm water to know that they're not going to lose their boat tonight. This has happened repeatedly. People have lost their boat. They come the next morning, they can't find their boat. I know one, two, three, four fishermen, other men just losing boat. The police lost their boat, for goodness sake. One morning, the police couldn't find their boat, their orange boat, which ended up in St. Croix, you see? And this is just because the wind and the waves and the weather, you know, somebody makes a mistake or something come loose, it's gone, you see? So we spoke with Ty, asked them about that, tried to show them what we believe. You know, if they could have sacrificed on the extreme length and put it and used the money they got and done there. They're talking about they're shortage of money. How could you be short of money and you're using sand from another country? That's another story. They're purchasing sand from another country and importing sand to Monserrat, a country which supplies sand to all the other islands. We supply sand from Guadeloupe going right up to St. Thomas. These people, I don't understand. They're talking about alkaline silica reactivity. I'm pretty sure there's a way to negate that and get around that. Antigua Port has used our material. Tautola Port has used our material. I'm talking about Monserrat material. These are the countries have used our material. It looks so idiotic that we can't use our own material for Monserrat. Doesn't make sense. And then now, they have all this problem to deal with, fumigating the material that's coming in to prevent the possible problem of invasive species. You know, spending a lot of money to try and prevent, you're bringing it home and then try to prevent getting, you know, run loose in the country. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bouffant, if you wish to share any further information, please do not hesitate. You may write it and submit it to the clerk at the Legislative Assembly. You're not stranger to that, so we will find out. Do you mind, or you want to leave this with us? Can we have this one? Yeah, okay. Okay, once again, I want to say thank you to all those witnesses that we've heard today. We want to also extend our gratitude to our technician, Roger Monserrat, and those who have joined us virtually and to Roger Monserrat and those who have joined us in person as well. Thank you so much as well to the other members of the committee. Please have a good evening all. Thank you.